It is now 5:01. October 1, 2019. And I call to order the regular meeting. Is this on? And I call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council seating is the Library Board of Trustees.
Yeah.
Southern California Logistics Rail Authority. Southern California Logistics Airport Authority. Successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency. The Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority. The Victorville Water District and the City's Housing Assets Accessor. May we have real call, please?
Councilmember Cox?
Here.
Councilmember Gomez?
Present.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Mayor Protem Ramirez?
Mayor Garcia?
Here.
Mayor Protem Ramirez absent.
At this time, we have, I don't see anyone that wants to address the council at this time, so can we have declaration of closed session items by our city attorney, please?
We actually have some other public comments for right now. There are some public comments. Do you want to take those first, or do you want to have the closed session?
I call for the closed session person, and we'll...
All right, we have eight items on closed session this evening. Items A and B on behalf of the City Council are existing litigation pursuant to government code 5495-6.9D1. And the case name and case numbers are set forth on the agenda. And actually, they are related to items E and F on behalf of the Airport Authority. Item C and D, a real property negotiations pursuant to government code 5495-6.8. The property location and the parties to the negotiations are set forth on the agenda. Item G is also existing litigation pursuant to government code 5495-6.9D1. And again, the case name and case number is set forth on the agenda. Lastly, we have on behalf of the Water District under item H, real property negotiations pursuant to government code 5495-6.8. And again, the property location and negotiating parties are set forth on the agenda. To the extent there is reportable action, we report it either at the conclusion of the closed session or at the commencement of the six o'clock regular session.
Thank you. Now, we do have one card, and that's Blanca Gomez. Good evening, Ms. Gomez.
Hello. So, I'm going to be, have several items available here. And the first one is A. So, on each one respectively, I'm going to be wait to be called. So, for closed session, part A, didn't the city already settle? That's a question that I like to pose and hopefully get a response. The second one is, why are the hangers of which the city, under the former Airport Director of SCLA-A, already, which already expended over $19 million, of which the city tax-paying dollars are being funded from any of the city's what I call coffers and accounts? Not sure what specific accounts these are coming from specifically. That hasn't been relayed, and it hasn't been cleared in written documentation. And if it has been said, it's long forgotten because they didn't come into my ears. Next question that I have regarding the same item is, why is the KND affiliates LLC, why do they keep appearing sporadically on the city's agenda? Perhaps it confuses the public. They may perceive that we don't have a KND affiliates. Demand anything that would hinder the city's paying ability or settling ability. And I think that could be better outspoken since it has not been closed and it's ongoing and consistently showing up. And why does the city attorney continue to add items like the KND sporadically rather than keeping it on agenda or the City Council to address the matters as they appear? We are not considered a court system. And perhaps the reason I bring these questions is because as a general public, these are questions that have been brought up. And there's a sense of not understanding how the agenda is really navigated through closed session. And this is the item for item A that I would like to consistently pound upon each of our minds if we forgot that we represent a very large constituency who does not sit in or not attorneys or experts in the matter.
Madam Mayor, I could actually answer that very quickly if you want a very simple answer, since it is on the agenda. We can't typically discuss these items.
But we can't discuss anything.
It's in, yeah, it's in public comments, so that, it's not listed in public comments, so we can't really discuss it. But I could maybe meet with Councilmember Gomez and explain it to her. After the meeting.
Okay. Because she has item B, E, F.
I'm presuming because Mayor Gloria Garcia did say that I have B, E, F, and G, that either I am being called one by one and allotted my minute timing, which I would not like shortened. So, I will take them one by one unless I can use the same time allotted for each one. Not willing to negate the time that I have for each item. I don't know how that...
But time allotted, but we cannot answer anything because it's...
Okay, so I'm on, I'm on B. How much money has the Kinzel slash Newcom and Didos cost the city thus far? There hasn't been a reporting. And if there has, may we bring it back or point out or make sure that the audience knows that there is a certain amount? When did the issue of existing litigation occur? What are their dates? What are the issues? Who is all involved when we do name the City of Victorville and then when we actually do name Kinzel slash Newcom? And the next question is, why isn't the city putting the Kinzel, Newcom, Didos together with the K and D affiliates? I'm sure they're separate issues, but in the minds of a lot of the constituency, they are one and all when it's coming out of the same funding pockets that come from the City of Victorville. So, that would hopefully get further explained as the time develops very quickly here. Unknown to many, this KND Kinzel case against the City of Victorville is to the right of the city that was wronged the then, by the then SCLA Director Keith Mezler. When is the next date of the hearing to the place of items A and B which are against the City of Victorville? Those are not evident, and if they were, if they would be consistently reminded to the community, that would be grateful. I know Andre De Bornowski is not on the matter as a primary attorney. So, who is? How many attorneys are there in the case? And how much has been expended up to date fiscally and financially to this item?
You can continue. I think you're on me.
So, item E, another closed session item. Why is the city agendizing KND as an extension or to a new existing litigious event issued under the City Council and SCLA? Those are another pieces of questions that perhaps the experts and those that have been promptly involved don't understand the constituency need some of these responses. Are there two cases with the same name and number? I know we, I heard Andre say something about two, almost making them seem together. It was inferred from my understanding, but this is still not clearly the case, and so we would need clarification for that. Are there two cases separate with the distinctive issues being brought by the council? One for city and one for SCLA if the City Council sits as one acting member on all of these various types of committees? The way the city has divided the setup, the items on the agenda seem, seem to misguided and are arbitrarily, arbitrarily seemingly placed on the different items for separate discussions. That's for item E.
Okay, you're on F now?
Yes, F. Again, the existing litigation that has cost this city $8.9 million for a single defense of one high executive administrator by the name of Mr. Mezler. How is the city now benefiting or being affected by another lawsuit that should have been folded into the SEC case, which was against the City of Victorville, which has cost our tax-paying dollars an arm and a leg and now a head? The electorate in Victorville, 19-plus million dollars. Now, switching to item G, another closed.
Ask for clarification. I'm trying to write some notes. What cost 29 million for one single lawsuit?
Mr. Cox, I never said the word 29. 19-plus million is what I said. So, now I'm going to go ahead and move on to item G. We fought so long and hard to keep the integrity of COMAV, who has been with us for 20-plus years, a tenant of SCLA. The City of Victorville tried so hard to avail, in my opinion, to destroy the family-owned, maintained, and operations aviation entity by withholding its employees' cards and accessing and not letting accessibility to the airport, even to bathrooms, if we recall. A very trying and childish act from the executive team of this city. Now, after part, was not able to take over the lease when the city promised it from COMAV's hangar space. Now, we are seeing the city being targeted again for some more money. Is Victorville really deep pockets for organizations that need to take place against this issue that came up against leadership and its direction from SCLA's director, Mr. Mezler, who was given, and I quote-unquote, immunity from prosecution by expending city tax dollars of approximately $8.6 million that has been run free from being imprisoned? Those types of white-collar crimes catch up to you, Victorville. White-collar crimes refer to financially motivated, non-violent crimes committed by businesses and government professionals, just like Enron, who was found for a period of time to re-correcting its accounting practices. Then, it was revealed what is awaiting here in this city. You City Council, sit, oh, the next one, sorry, it's the Water Board.
Last one that you...
That was the last one? Thank you.
Done.
She wants H, I think, which is the Water District.
Yes. You're right. Thank you. I was going to clarify that. This is the Water District.
But she didn't give me a card for that.
Right, ma'am, but I have a right to be able to speak and not submit any card, and that's my constitutional right. And I believe if you'd like to ask your city attorney, he can confirm that for you.
Go ahead.
Okay, for H. Your City Council, you City Council sit as the Victorville Water District now. However, we must be reminded that before the WID 1 and WID 2 was taken over, power was a struggle. It would not be relented. Remember James Kennedy, the former City Council, who with exhilaration endorsed and vowed to give his seat to Deborah Jones? And now, James Cox, we're seated both in the Water District. All this to say that just a few months ago, the discussion of water was brought up, and according to the manager of the city, there were no issues with the water, none with the fees, none with adjudication, but yet tonight, we're going to be hearing something in relying to this water. However, today, the agenda shows otherwise. So, what negotiations behind closed doors in relation to the Water District are going to be discussed? Water rights? Water abuse? And if it's related to property as stated in the closed session, why would the city attorneys or the responsible parties place it to be a key item as the others in closed session? These are a couple of the things that we need to be reminded that our community is unaware. I am unaware. And so, some of these things require and hopefully get some transparency in terms of letting the constituency know why something of this matter, closed session does in itself give a negative connotation of being closed and only privy to certain individuals.
So, we will now recess?
Yes, appropriate to recess to closed session.
Okay. We will now recess to a closed session, and a regular session convenes at 6:00 P.M.
Okay. Thanks.
Good evening, everyone. It is now 6:06, October 1, 2019. And I call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council seating is the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the City's Housing Assets Accessor. May we have real call, please?
Here.
Councilmember Gomez?
Present.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Mayor Protem Ramirez?
Mayor Garcia?
Here.
Mayor Protem Ramirez absent.
At this time, can we have closed session announcements by our city attorney, please?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We had eight items on the agenda this evening, some of which were related. Items A and B were existing litigation pursuant to government code 5495-6.9D1. The case names and the case parties are set forth on the agenda. They are related to items E and F on behalf of the Airport Authority. Again, the same parties and same case numbers. Item C was real property negotiations pursuant to government code 5495-6.8, as was item D. And the property locations and property negotiating parties are set forth on the agenda. Item G was existing litigation, again pursuant to government code 5495-6.9D1. And again, the case name and case numbers on the agenda. And lastly, item H was real property negotiations pursuant to government 5495-6.8. Again, the property location and parties negotiating are set forth on the agenda. At this time, there is no reportable action with respect to any of those items.
Thank you very much. This evening, the invocation will be delivered by Pastor Fido Risen. I hope I got it right. And the Applied of Allegiance will be led by Police Chief Rick Bassinger, so please
Father, we thank you for this privilege to come and to speak our opinions. We would ask, O God, that you would give us reason and understanding this evening. We ask your blessing upon this city of Victorville. In the name of Jesus, we pray.
This evening, we do have a presentation that will be by Dana Armstrong, Tumars Pet Care North America, California Resource Recovery Association, Zero Waste Achievement Award.
Testing. There we go. Thank you, Mayor Garcia, and members of the City Council. I would like to invite Juan Ibarra from Mars Pet Care to join me up front. Juan is the sanitation manager at the facility here in Victorville, somebody near and dear to my heart, a fellow solid waste professional. So, thank you, Juan, for being here. I am very pleased to be here tonight to give recognition to Mars Pet Care for the incredible work that they're doing to recycle and reduce waste at their facility here in Victorville. In August, Mars Pet Care received the Zero Waste Achievement Award from the California Resource Recovery Association, also known as CRRA. They were the only business in the state that was so honored this year. Each year, CRRA presents awards to individuals and organizations which go above and beyond in their efforts to prevent waste, reuse materials, recycle, compost, buy recycled, and build green. The Zero Waste Achievement Award is awarded to a progressive business, government agency, nonprofit, or school that has made the commitment to zero waste, implemented outreach programs, and excelled towards the goal of zero waste. I would like to give some background information on why Mars Pet Care Plant in Victorville was chosen to receive the award this year. The Mars Pet Care North America Manufacturing Plant in Victorville produces 80,000 tons per year of Nutro and Crave brand dry-bagged dog and cat food. They operate out of a 520,000-square-foot building on 30 acres. Six packaging lines are operated by approximately 140 employees. It's a big facility, and they make a lot of pet food. Mars Corporate launched its Sustainability in Generation Plan in 2016, and the plan has three main pillars: a healthy planet, thriving people, and nourishing well-being. In keeping with the corporate sustainability goal, the Victorville facility has been diligently working to reduce waste, recycle, and minimize waste sent to landfill. In 2018, their Victorville facility achieved the goal of zero waste to landfill through committed and innovative recycling, reuse, compost, and energy recovery projects. So, how did they do it? I want to know. Well, I nominated them, so I do know how they did it. The facility has no trash receptacles. Instead, there are clearly labeled containers for metal, film plastics, hard plastics, compostable materials, and energy recovery. Corrugated cardboard is baled, as are the hard and film plastics. Organic materials are placed in a compactor and hauled to a local composting facility. Organics recovered include food scraps from employee lunchrooms, contaminated paper, as well as floor sweepings, and materials which are not suitable for livestock feed. Any product that spills on the floor cannot be sold as their finished product, but it is instead collected and shipped to hog farms as animal feed. Several years ago, they worked with one of their raw material suppliers to switch from disposable bulk meat containers to reusable containers. This, the reusable containers are cleaned, sterilized, and refilled, eliminating the disposal and recycling of 315 containers per week. I mean, this is the scale of their operation, or over 16,000 containers per year. In 2018, facility, oop, they cut me off. The facility recycled and composted 8,229 tons and only sent 24 tons of material for energy recovery. They achieved a 99.7% recycling and composting rate with only .3% sent to energy recovery. No material went to the landfill. Mars Pet Care has an outstanding, has set an outstanding example for all to follow. They have shown what is possible when you make a commitment to a zero-waste goal. I hope other Victorville businesses will be inspired by the example that you have set. Juan, as I said, is the sanitation manager for the facility and is a key person in achieving this goal. There was another gentleman who was not able to be here, Eddie Laredo. He's kind of the boots-on-the-ground frontline gentleman who's really helping keep the program on track, so we want to give our kudos to him as well. So, congratulations, Juan. Congratulations to Mars Pet Care for this incredible achievement and for receiving the Zero Waste Award. And thank you to you personally for your hard work, and to Eddie, and for all the employees there for making this happen. So, thank you. And I'm presenting the award on behalf of CRRA. They were not able to attend the conference in August, so we thought we would do it at a council meeting. You're very welcome.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, we have done a lot of work after you read all that. It's been a lot of dedication, a lot of hard work. And the only way to really make a program like this work is to have your associates, they're buying it. It doesn't work if you don't have the associates participate and drive the program, and that's really what made this successful. So, we will continue to improve and better our program, and hopefully others will follow and use our side as a, yeah, as an example. And I'll be glad to help anybody out.
Thank you. Thank you, and congratulations. At this time, I will have our city clerk present the agenda and any revisions to the council, please.
The Victorville City Council welcomes the public's participation in tonight's meeting. Anyone wishing to speak during public comment or on a particular item will be required to fill out a white speaker card, locate it in the lobby, and give it to the city clerk. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per individual or less as deemed necessary by the mayor. All communications are to be addressed directly to the City Council, not to the members of the audience. In accordance with state law, the City Council may not discuss or take action on any non-agenda items. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Any person or group who interferes with the conduct of a City Council meeting by interrupting and/or disrupting the meeting is subject to removal. A peace officer may be requested to assist with removal should any person or group fail to comply with an order of removal by the presiding officer. Any person or group who resists removal by a peace officer is subject to arrest and prosecution. I have no revisions. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. At this time, any item on this agenda that may be a conflict of interest to any council member or board members should be identified at this time. Is there any item that may be a conflict to anyone? None? Then, we move on. We do not have any appeal hearings this evening. Therefore, we will be moving on to public hearings and starting with item B1. A public hearing to consider the approval of a loan from Neighborhood Stabilization Program III funds to Desert Haven Victorville LP for reimbursement of project acquisition costs associated with the Desert Haven Apartments Affordable Housing Project. Madam Clerk, will you please read the recommendation?
That the City Council conducts a public hearing to receive citizen participation and public comments regarding the adoption of Resolution Number 19-073 approving a $1,509,505 loan of NSP III funds to Desert Haven Victorville for reimbursement of property acquisition costs associated with the Desert Haven Apartments Affordable Housing Project, former Queens Motel... Motel, amend the annual budget for fiscal year 2019-2020 by approving additional appropriation in the amount of $689,152.10, and authorizes the city manager to execute loan documents and ancillary agreements and to take action in furtherance of the loan transactions.
Thank you. At this time, council members, do you have any questions of staff? I will start with Ms. Gomez.
So, yes, we're on Item B1, is that correct? Thank you, Mr. Cox, for the response. Is my microphone working? Can you hear me back there? Thank you. So, my question is as follows. Specifically, what reimbursement cost is the city and the organization referring to? That's my first question in relation to this item. The second one is, what authority is this council providing or adopting, making other related findings and determinations for the city's execution of further loan documents? And NSP funding is 100% federal funding, I'm assuming? On page 15, it's not clear if it is. I see the implementation, but it's not specific as to that. And then, thus far, how much money has been already pre-approved for the Desert Haven project, and from what funds agencies and organizations are all-inclusive? And a vague response would be state, local, and federal. I'm looking for more of a specificity in terms of those specific organizations and entities that are partners with us.
Madam Mayor and members of council, I'll attempt to answer those questions as I provide a general overview of this item, just to help you and certainly the audience that may not be familiar with this item. And I just want to identify that as a part of the presentation, we have an executive director, Anthony Perez, who represents Housing Partners here in the audience as well, and he can answer any of the very site-specific questions. This item was brought to you by Deputy City Manager Sophie Smith, and this is a project that we're certainly very excited about. We attempted to bring it back to you at the last meeting. However, there was some needs to attend to finalizing the documents. It just couldn't be finalized by the time of that meeting, but we're finally glad and grateful to be able to bring this item to you. It's been a long time coming, as we've mentioned, in the sense that we've been working with the County Housing Authority from day one, when they first born this idea, this concept of redeveloping the former Queens Motel into a facility that is now going to be a 32-unit facility geared towards helping the chronically homeless. Of those 32 units, 31 are all single-floor, single-unit studios with one two-bedroom unit to serve a full-time manager on-site, to have manager or management presence. We've worked with the county from the start, navigating the land use side of things, and we'd always believed that with the cooperation amongst ourselves and HUD, and answering the question as to federal funds, HUD being a federal agency, we've identified funds, but we had to work with HUD quite a bit to be able to apply the use of these former NSP monies for redevelopment purpose with the cooperation of all. We've gotten to this point where we've been able to fulfill what our original intent all along was, which was to provide the assistance in the order of $1.5 million to help address the acquisition side of this project. The Housing Authority did move at risk based upon our desire and our representation that we wanted to help, so they actually advanced and closed on the property and started the rehab process, and we're pleased to finally, as they're nearing the completion of this project, we're pleased to be able to memorialize the use of our NSP money in the form of what this item is, is a residual receipts loan that actually has a term defined to it, and I believe it's outlined in the staff report with a residual receipts interest rate of 1% a year. I'm sorry, the loan is 55 years, which is actually identified on page 16 of the agenda. So, with that, answering the question of the acquisition cost is basically to repay for the physical acquisition of the property. That's buying the dirt and the building and any assets that go along with the real property. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Sophie Smith unless she, in case she would like to add any further details that I missed, and certainly, again, we have Mr. Perez in the audience to answer any questions of him as the partner on the project.
Councilmember Gomez, I believe you also asked if the NSP funding was all federal funding, and that's correct it is, and I did not get your last question.
I wanted to see if we had any partnerships with others, and a vague question would be yes, other municipalities, states. I wanted to see if there's specifically a consortium, for example, with the city of Apple Valley, which would be more justifiable to a specific detailed response versus a general vague one like state, other local municipalities, if we had any partnerships with them.
Our relationship on this project is as a lender, so the city is effectively loaning money to the project. The entity that's owning and responsible for the project is a partnership amongst the County Housing Authority and its nonprofit, where they formed a limited partnership effectively to hold title and ownership and to manage the ongoing operations of the facility. That would be the partnership that we're not a party to, we're just a lender in this particular case, but that would be the party then responsible for continuing the operation and applying for any further fundings to help continue its operations.
I do, Madam Mayor, thank you so much. All right. So, my first question is, when I was reading the background data on this item, it, and it's not on my screen now, but it basically said that there were no barriers for people that wanted to live in these places, there were no preconditions set, but am I to understand that there actually is a coordinated entry system, and is that through 211?
That is correct, and if possible, I would like to ask Mr. Anthony Perez to add a little more detail about barriers, but coordinated entry, the CES system here in our county is 211, and that type of entry and participation in that system is a requirement, so there's no walk-ins off of the street, for example. But common barriers to entry in other shelters or in other transitional housing units might be preclusion because maybe perhaps you have drug dependency or a criminal history, and so this project is meant to eliminate some of those barriers. But, Mr. Perez, if you could speak a little bit more on what tenant requirements you will have for the council?
Is it on?
It should be.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers, thank you very much. Again, Anthony Perez, Executive Director of Housing Partners One. And also, we brought tonight Shamira Shirley, who works for the Housing Authority for the county of San Bernardino, and actually, the specific question I'd like to have Shamira answer that, she's more well-versed than even I am.
Hi, yes. Shamira Shirley, I'm the Asset Management Analyst that's been working closely with our partners and our special programs with our voucher program to kind of bring this project to fruition. So, the referrals that are happening, we've got two partners that are referring to this program. There'll be five referrals from Inland Empire Health Plan, specifically, directly from a program called the 3-H Program. So, these are high utilizers of like emergency room services and things of that nature to try and get them off the streets and stabilized in housing. Also, the other 26 referrals will be coming from Department of Behavioral Health in partnership with CES. So, that's where we work with the coordinated entry system to get referrals of homeless individuals that have a high acuity, meaning a high need, to have housing placements with wraparound supportive services to kind of help them stabilize in housing and get connected to the resources they need to become self-sufficient. Does that answer your question?
It does mine, absolutely, because I recall having sat in the audience some time ago that there were wraparound services involved, so I'm glad to hear that, and so that people have to candidates for those services, right? Because not everybody really wants to have the help, even though they might want a more secure environment, so. All right, and then the other question I have is, so, I know that this property was not originally owned by the city of Victorville, and it's in the condition it is in because it has been blighted. What assurances do we have that it's not going to go down that road again, and that our investment is going to be for naught?
So, one of the documents that has been drafted along with the loan agreement and the promissory note is a regulatory agreement, and among other things such as how the property will operate, those types of requirements for upkeep of the property, et cetera, are all outlined in the regulatory agreement, and that runs the 55 years of the loan.
That's all I have. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
I have no questions.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Well, I still have a couple of questions. I was going to save them for later, but I think I should go ahead, because our public commentators are going to do the same. It was a concern for the constituency that brought to my attention, the contract that we're looking at, and the interpretation of the contract was perceived to be a contract that would later on become, after so many years, a living space, not for the homeless, but for the actual population of the city of Victorville. That was wording that was found within that could be interpreted as such, and you'll perhaps be seeing one of the public commentators touch up a little bit of that, and when it does come across, if you can address it. It was specifically brought to my attention, and I think that's one of the things that we should look at, if the interpretation can fall that way, meaning it's no longer for the homeless.
Madam Mayor, if I might, and we're certainly glad to work a little bit more closely with Councilmember Gomez on the interpretation. Staff, along with legal counsel, has looked very closely at that and have a differing opinion as to it being able to deviate from what's actually outlined in the regulatory document, at the least. There's going to be a number of other documents governing this intended purpose.
Thank you. Thank you for that information. Okay, so now, let's see, I open the public hearing at this time, and I do have, I do have some cards here. The first one is Kevin Mahaney.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Councilmembers. My name is Kevin Mahaney. I'm Director of Community Health Investment at St. Mary Medical Center, and I'm here tonight to applaud the city for being an investor in this project, sadly with greater frequency, St. Mary, and we believe other hospitals are having to discharge patients who don't have a place to go. I find it somewhat incredible that we would be at this place, but we're at this place. So, I applaud the city. I know that not just St. Mary, but other hospitals are looking at, how can we come alongside and be an investor? What really appeals to us about this project is what has already been discussed, and that was the low or no barrier, and also the strategy to provide services at the site. Many of the patients that we discharge are using substances, and do not, at that moment we discharge them, say they want to stop using substances. Many of the programs we have in our community will not accept anybody unless they commit to saying they want to kick the habit, so to speak, of either alcohol or drugs. So, we're befuddled as to what we do with them. My hope is that this project, once it starts up, will do what we all would like to see, and that is that the old town Victorville area will not have so many homeless folks roaming up and down the streets and causing chaos or concern, or be an annoyance to the business community. Thank you very much for doing this.
Thank you so much. Ramiro Rodriguez.
First of all, I applaud this project. It's very beneficial. When I first heard about it, wow, it's great. One of the things, because of Section Article 34, you don't have to have order approval for something like this, because it's being built on something that's already existing. But what kind of surprised me and made me kind of questioning it, if you really want to tackle the homeless population, why start off with a 60-unit building and only bring it down to 31? And I went and read and read, it wasn't just 105 pages, it was another 50 pages with additional information, and that additional information, it says Desert Haven would be giving priority to eligible households and residents that are employed in the city of Victorville. So, that's in the wording inside that contract. So, that now, is it for the homeless people, or is it going to, like it says, it's going to give preference, is it in the future going to be something out for rent, is it going to go for $1,500? Because remember, instead of having 60 people or 120 in one unit, one, you know, studio apartments, they went to, you know, 31 units, they broke them down to one and two bedrooms. But that wording is in the backup material, so that's what I'm questioning. It's just all of, if everything is going to be, the loan is going to be from everybody, I thought it was a grant, and then found out it's just a loan from the Housing Authority with Maria Rosso is the one spearheading all this. But the loans for the three people involved is 55 years, and my question is also, how did the city contract with $1.5 million? What was, did it just ask you, hey, we need $1.5 million, or did it itemize that it's going to be used for so-so? And also, on a lot of the backup materials, it also gives the city authority to approve building ventures into that Desert Haven.
You have 30 seconds?
Into that Desert Haven project from $50,000 to up to $150,000. So, that could become just a nightmare if it's not managed properly. But it says right there, it's for the people that work here and for families in the city, not for the homeless. Thank you.
Those were all the yes speaker cards that I had. So, at this time, I will close the public hearing.
Madam Mayor, may I address the speakers' comments for clarification?
Please do. Please do.
Thank you.
I think there's some confusion here.
So, the section that is referred to is actually in the regulatory agreement, it's Section 6.3A1, and this language was specifically added because in earlier conversations about this project with the council, there were comments received by staff that if the city participates in a project, basically, how does it ensure that those homeless individuals being helped actually have some kind of tie to Victorville? And while preference in who is housed has some legal implications, we work closely with our legal counsel, as well as that of the partnership and the Housing Authority, to add language that was legally acceptable, that acknowledges that if the city of Victorville is going to help this project financially, it would like to serve its homeless population wherever possible. So, yes, they are Victorville residents if they're living out on the streets in Victorville. Those are the Victorville residents that that section is meant to address. And I think one of the questions, the other question was, how was the $1.5 million use of funds determined? In negotiations with the Housing Authority and with the partnership, what was requested of the city was the amount that was paid for the property, the acquisition costs, to pay the existing loan on the property off, and that is the $1,509,000.
Thank you for that clarification. I hope that clears up the questions. I do not have any other cards, therefore, I need a motion in a second.
Madam Mayor, I move forward with the recommendation of adopting the resolution of the city council. of the City Council.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further comments?
Yes. Am I to understand that also the recommended, excuse me, the motion includes Point 2 and the recommendation to amend the annual budget for the additional appropriation? $52,010 and 10 cents.
Was there a question for staff?
I just want to, well, I just want to make sure that the intention of the motion is to not only adopt the resolution, but to amend the annual budget as part of the recommendation in Point 2 on the agenda.
The answer is that it is the intent of the recommendation to include the appropriation, amending the annual budget.
Mr. Cox, are you okay with the full recommendation of staff on the staff report?
Oh, yes. This is a, I can read that full paragraph, but the intent is the resolution and the recommendations adopted, the recommendation by staff, which is all-inclusive, it includes all that.
You're okay with it?
I have a motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further comments?
Yes. So, I want to make sure that the clarity of the interpretation, when we reinterpret something and say, yes, it's for the Victorville homeless populations, that would hopefully fit within 30 units, which I was told was going to be 90, and then it went from 60 to 30, one-two bedroom. The language says employed individuals. How many of our individuals who are homeless ever get employment when we have a bedroom community, in a retirement community in the city of Victorville? So, what are we doing when we put language like employed individuals to make it legally assertive? We are interpreting that that's going to be for the homeless, but we're also hopefully having wraparound services which provide the actual employment of the chronically ill who are homeless, because this is a subset of homeless individuals who are there. So, for the record, I want to make sure that that's the clarity, and if the reinterpretation can be reinterpreted from today's council to 20 years from now and change, that it was said on the record that that was a possible interpretation because of the word employed individuals versus homeless individuals who reside in the city of Victorville that do not necessarily have to be employed.
Next staff's comment.
I believe we've actually addressed that, but we certainly can expand on it. And I think beyond the explanation already given, among the variety of services that this project, this development is going to offer, you're certainly going to see mental health counseling, you're also going to have drug counseling, you're also going to have employment assistance. So, you know, one of the ultimate goals is to help some of these folks get on their feet and eventually out into a sustainable lifestyle. So, with that, you know, I think it's possible to view also being employed while being a part of this project. So, the goal is eventually to help them be employed, and then eventually be able to rent a home of their own, if possible, and just normally assimilate back into society.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification.
Motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Ramirez being absent.
Now, we move on to Item B2, a public hearing to hear arguments for and against the formation of underground utility district number 19-01. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council adopt Resolution Number 19-076, which forms the Underground Utility District 19-01 in the area of Arrowhead Drive at Evansdale Way, southerly to 7th Avenue at Sitting Bull Street.
Thank you. Councilmembers, any questions of staff? Two minute time limit. I'll start with Ms. Jones.
I have none. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Questions?
Ms. Gomez?
Yes. So, if my recollection serves me well, we spoke about a formation of an underground utilities district. What was the last agenda item in connection with this agenda, if there is that connection? Perhaps there's not, but I know we talked about the same topic matter. And what is the impact of the surrounding businesses, if there are any, and the benefits of the general public at large for what we're doing today? It's an explanation would suffice for this.
So, the last agenda item was, it was actually the last council meeting, and that agenda item was recommending that we would schedule a public hearing to consider the formation of a utility underground district, which is, was scheduled for today. And there are no businesses adjoining the district. They're all residential properties. So, the only ones that are affected are, they're shown on an exhibit. It's an attachment at the end of the agenda item. But there are several residential properties that would be affected by the district. There is only one, actually only one overhead connection to a property now, but there are overhead electric and communication lines along the frontages of the properties.
So, I'm still kind of waiting for the benefits, which should be obvious to the developer and the person, you know, working with the underground district, the terminology that we use, but...
These are all existing single-family home properties, so there is no proposed development on these properties. And the benefit is that instead of the electrical and communication lines being overhead, they would be installed underground.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Madam Mayor, if I might, just to expand on that, the city does have a undergrounding ordinance in place. So, for new development, typically as a part of the development process, one of the mitigation, I'm sorry, one of the requirements always is for new development to underground where there are existing overhead utilities, unless there's an agreement to suspend for the undergrounding at a later date. These Rule 20A funds are really intended to help communities like ours that have an intent to ultimately underground electrical distribution lines, but do it in areas where development's already occurred, so you don't necessarily have the same flexibility or latitude to impose it as you would with new development. So, this is not the first time we've done this. I think the last time we did this was in connection with the La Mesa-Nesqually interchange project, and actually, the fixing of Nesqually, I think it was taking out the curves and building out the curbs and gutters. So, with that, this is a fund. I think also important to note, this is a fund that we don't control. We don't own it. Actually, it's maintained by Southern California Edison, but they actually collect it, and it's an actual collection on each and every resident's bill. That money goes into account, and when a city like ours is able to identify an area where ideally they'd like to underground electric utilities where they're not likely to be able to condition new development to do it, this is what ideally these funds are really intended to serve. And then finally, the larger vision of why we've identified this area has a lot to do with the fact that 7th Avenue, Arrowhead, north and south, if you will, of Nesqually, extending from Green Tree to Bear Valley Road, we do have a major reconstruction project planned for the upcoming fiscal year, the 2020-21 fiscal year. So, from our perspective, with that major reconstruction effort going on, we think this is an ideal candidate to where undergrounding would help, and if we don't address it now, it likely would not occur because we wouldn't have the ability to condition private development.
Thank you. Does that answer all your questions?
I have another question that stemmed from this. So, knowing that this is not something new, knowing that it goes with development, and this is with SEC, Southern California Edison, I want to know, are we potentially looking at, I think it's 10 years if it wasn't 20 years, but there's the planning that the city looks at our CAP projects, and we can anticipate development in certain areas. Have we predisposed of an outline that would suggest that something of this nature consistently comes in, or is it something, not necessarily random, but when the development comes, then you guys look at it rather than being pre-patterned and prepared for something like this?
The Rule 20A funds that are used for a project like this are only for existing developed properties, undergrounding adjacent to developed properties. When new development occurs, our code requires that they underground the facilities along their property frontage. So, it's really two different processes, two different situations.
Thank you. No further questions.
Thank you. At this time, I open the public hearing. I do not have any speaker cards. I close the public hearing, and I need a motion in a second.
Madam Mayor, I move that the City Council approve the Resolution 19-076, which forms the Underground Utility District 19-01 in the area of Arrowhead Drive at Evansdale Way, southerly of 7th Avenue at Sitting Bull.
Seconding that motion? I'm sorry.
I have a motion made by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember Gomez. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Oh, I'm sorry. Motion carries with Ramirez being absent.
Now, we move on to Item B3, a request for continuance of a public hearing to hear arguments for and against the approval of an ordinance of the City Council of the city of Victorville regarding employer-employee relations. The recommendation is that the City Council conduct the public hearing, take testimony, and continue the public hearing to the November 5, 2019 City Council meeting. Are there any questions of staff by councilmembers?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Jim.
Well, the public hearing items on the agenda, the heading states "public hearing." In this agenda item, it's written communications because there's a request that it be continued. So, are we going to have the continued public hearing, continue to a public hearing to another meeting, or open the public hearing and continue the item? I am confused by the lack of the public hearing heading.
I would recommend that we open the public hearing and continue the item. Take any testimony tonight, but then continue, keep the public hearing open and continue it to November 5.
Thank you. Do we have any questions of staff at this time?
Yes. So, Andre, you just suggested something that you typically do suggest, but there's been a time in the past where you have not suggested us to open and then continue, but instead to entirely shut down something that was, that has been on the agenda. And I'm not sure if that was because it was a hearing, or it was maybe a written type of response. But would you be able to clarify why you can justify your response to being open, but then continue to allow the people to speak?
Certainly. This is a request for a continuance. The other items I believe you were talking about is when an item is being tabled, and when there is an immediate request to table the item, the council's not considering that item until some future date, so there's no point in opening a public hearing and taking testimony on it at that point.
Thank you for the clarification. The next question, I do see a memo from the city manager's desk. However, there is no relayed purpose for the request for the continuance of ordinance number 2396, and I think the public and the council, at least the council that has not spoke to the continuance of the knowledge of what it did occur. Why? What's the purpose? Are we not ready? I mean, is there no time allotted?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, if I might, I can't answer that. Upon recent review, actually was further review, I think I've read and reviewed this three or four times now, and having reviewed it again very recently, I've determined a need to consider making a modification to the existing code so that this intended ordinance is actually adopted in a way where it's more compatible with the existing code. There were some codes that we identified dating back to 1971 that we think now need to be altered, just to make this more effective and be more compatible. So, as the city attorney alluded to, November, that timeframe is intended to allow us to do the requisite noticing for an amendment to the existing code, and the vision for staff is to bring this back at a same time in November, where we're also altering existing municipal codes so that we have compatibility between the two codes.
So, what has been implicit, rather not explicit, but yet inferred with what you're stating, is that perhaps since 1971, to have to look at something like this and change the coding is something that's required? Are we doing that with our entire municipal code, probably looking at things back in the 70s to preponder and see how we can change that? Or is that just specifically this, and that's where the purpose and the why comes into it?
If you will, and in general, the executive team's responsibility in all of its items, in all of its daily businesses, to continue to look at codes, policies, and procedures, and make recommendations to the extent that their ordinances, we bring them back for consideration by this council. And we do that because just there's a large evolving nature of the business that we do. And as we continued to review this item, and ask questions, and deliberate internally amongst staff, is how we identified a desire to bring a little bit of clarity with some of the existing law that we found on the books, and effectively try to use one opportunity to clean up the introduction of this new proposed code, along with cleaning up existing code that's been dated for some time.
By any chance, is this related to any of the furlough days that we have, but now we're working Monday through Friday at 8:00, 20?
No.
Thank you. No further questions.
At this time, I open the public hearing, and I do have one speaker card, Ramiro Rodriguez. Thank you. That's fine. No problem. At this time, I need a motion in a second to continue the public hearing to the November 5, 2019 City Council meeting. So moved. Second.
I have two items, C1 and C2, that I'd like to...
Where's Jill?
On B3.
Okay.
I have a motion made by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Ramirez being absent.
Now, we move on to consent calendar. Consent calendar, items C1 through C9 may be approved with one motion, unless a council member requests an item be pulled for further discussion.
So, I have items C1 and C3 that I'd like to oppose. The other ones can be pre-approved if the council still adopts.
I move forward, move, move forward. Move to approve the consent calendar withdrawing items C1 and C3 for further discussions under questions.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember Jones. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Ramirez being absent.
So, if I may, this is more of a structural question in terms of how we are structuring the agenda and where it's positioned. So, if you look at items C1 and C3, it's the same question. I want to know, why is adopting of 19-007 being adopted under the consent calendar, and the same thing for item C3, whereas it could probably be placed anywhere else?
Councilmember Gomez, was your question on C1, there is no resolution. Were you talking about C3 and C2?
No, C3, just C3.
C1 and C3?
Okay, so to answer the question on C3, typically, the consent calendar is reserved for items that are routine in nature, perceived to be non-controversial. The payoff of mortgage assistance program loans is pretty routine. They're almost every single agenda, and for that reason, items, item C3 and a very like item, C2, are placed on the consent calendar.
So, is that response based on policy or administrative processes, or is it that
Or is it that just something that is status quo?
That's consistent with the way most cities handle routine matters. They're just coming back for the council for essentially acquiescence to the transaction. It's pretty typical of all cities.
I believe it's addressed in the council policy manual as well. I believe it may be, and just seeing the obvious difference between C1 and C3, is that C1 doesn't have a resolution, C3 does. C3 is a subject matter that is on virtually all of our council meetings, so it certainly is routine. I think perhaps it's the resolution that is the difference. And in this particular case, because it's, it kind of rises to a higher level of responsibility, especially when it comes to referencing transactional documents, because this is dealing with a real estate matter, is likely why it carries a resolution and C1 doesn't. But I believe that's probably the best response that I can give as to the difference between the two, and why they're still both on the consent calendar.
Okay, so just for clarity, then it's routine would be one of the elements. And perhaps my verbiage is not exact as to what Mrs. Sophie used, but things that are mundane or everyday, that don't require a lot of get-to-know. But I guess my, the response that I'm hearing from the city attorney is, well, other cities do it. Okay? And I can see the explanation, but I do take that as a kind of like mind my expression, but as an escape goat type of response. It was said that it was in the policy. Now, I haven't seen, the policy has been modified within 365, about four times within that time period. Very consistent modifications of the policy.
You have 30 seconds?
So I've not pinned through or combed through the policy where it has that. But if the policy does not suggest and have what the elements are to import something of this nature, we would, we should consider something like that. That way, we have clarity, not just for council, but for anyone who wants to understand the structure of how the City of Victorville composes its agenda. Thank you.
So Madam Mayor, if I might, for clarification, the current version of the City Council Policy Manual, Section 6, Letter E, reads, "The consent calendar. Items on this portion of the agenda include matters which are considered to be of a routine, administrative, or non-controversial nature, such as the approval of minutes of the prior meeting, approval of the register of demands, second readings of ordinance, et cetera. The items listed shall be approved and adopted by one motion of the council and will call vote." So it is in policy?
Thank you.
Questions? I move approval of C1 and C3.
Second. I have a motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember Jones. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Ramirez being absent.
Now we move on to written communications. Item D1, grant acceptance of the Department of Homeland Security Fiscal Year 2018 Assistance to Firefighters Grant. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council accepts the Department of Homeland Security Fiscal Year 2018 Assistance to Firefighters Grant in the amount of $310,633.63, adopts Resolution Number 19-075, approving additional revenue and additional appropriations in the federal grants fund in the amount of $310,633.63, and authorizes the budget transfer of $31,063.37 in matching funds for a total project budget of $341,697.
Thank you. Councilmembers, any questions of staff at this time?
Ms. Jones?
None, thank you.
No questions.
Gomez?
Yes. So a question that just came up. The first question is, does the City of Victorville have a grant writer working in the city for all elements and interests of the city, including for the firefighters department? And mind you, the response perhaps is yes, but I'd like verification of that.
Madam Mayor and council, the grant before you was written by the Fire Department Command Staff. We don't have a designated grant writer per se, but we all contributed to it.
Thank you. And then the next question is, I was supposing that we do have a grant writer, because to be able to have a fire station or different departments, we need monies coming in besides from the tax-paying dollars from our constituents, who sometimes earn very fixed incomes. I will go ahead and still ask that question, hoping that, I've heard sometimes we have our community department that does reach out and gets grants, and I've heard of several grants being granted to the City of Victorville. So I'm assuming if there's not one primary person, there's at least a teamship of individuals who find the need to do that. And if that is the case, and my question is relevant, if I can have an approximation, I'd like to see the value of the grant amount that we have received through grants, whether it's a teamship or individuals and each department head, that we are benefiting from as a city as a whole.
I believe that's not relevant to Item D1?
Yes, it is.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, if I might, and this is actually a very proud moment, so if I can, I'll use the opportunity to answer the question, because your fire chief's answer was on point with respect to the collaborative effort that goes into writing this particular grant and the success that they've achieved in getting that. And I'd eventually like the chief to speak a little bit more particularly about this. But I think to answer the question and help, the city's resources, as we know, are strained. We've been amazingly successful in all of the departments in getting grants. I think you're used to seeing a number of transportation-related grants. We're used to seeing FAA-related grants. We're fairly routine in being awarded grants at the airport as well. And the approach that was undertaken in the Fire Department is very similar to the approach that we take throughout all of the departments of the city. And to answer the question directly, we don't have one specific grant writer. We just don't have the resource to be able to do that. So the function of writing grant applications and managing the process to eventually get award and then spending them, that's a collaborative effort of the various departments. There's typically an assignment of staff that is knowledgeable in the function and responsibility that we're actually seeking the grants for. And it's the respective staff that takes on the duty of applying and administering above and beyond the duties that they traditionally do on a day-to-day basis. So with that, and perhaps I can get the chief not only to speak about the importance of this grant, but also to recognize the command staff that we do have in attendance today that played a very vital role in being able to get us to this item before you tonight.
They had a little more perspective to the city manager's response. From a grant perspective, it's beneficial to have multiple people contributing to the grant-writing process. And every, all of your command staff has differing experiences. In fact, one of the individuals who was really critical in this process, Battalion Chief Ron Myers, who is sitting in the audience tonight, he's had experience before, as well as I have, as well as other command staff. So in a competitive process like the AFG grant, you really have to put your best narrative and story forward to be successful. The items that were received here are going to help to enhance the services, as well as make the community and the firefighters safer.
Thank you.
Certainly. Congratulations to the Fire Department in getting the grant, and to all employees who work on different grants with different departments. We have been successful. And in the past, we, several years ago, when we had a grant writer, while they're very good and they know their business, they still go to each department and find the individual who has the experience to utilize in getting the information together. So I doubt that we would be any more successful, as long as we have qualified people who are experienced in getting grants. So for the Fire Department, congratulations, and all the other departments that receive grants. We need all the grants we can possibly get.
Exactly. So congratulations also.
I believe there requires an action if we're ready there for the grant acceptance. Is that correct?
I still need to do the speaker cards. I do not have any speaker cards now. I do need a motion in a second.
I move that the City Council accept the Department of Homeland Security Fiscal 2018 Assistance to Firefighters Grant, AFG, in the amount of $310,633.63.
Second. Motion made by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further comments? All those in favor?
I would also like to recognize the fact that we are fairly new, not even probably a year old. And I do appreciate the fact that you were able to mobilize and bring in enough asset to be able to write such grants, because we can't always depend on, you know, the taxpayers getting more money. But for the fact that you're actually still searching and looking, to me, that says a lot about not only your service behavior, when you have to do your duty, which is probably put your life on the line, but you're also doing it for those individuals when you're not putting your life on the line. And that's very supportive, and that really shows volumes of what you're doing and what you, I anticipate, only the beginning of what you're going to be doing. So thank you very much for that.
Motion made by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Ramirez being absent.
Now we move on to Item D2, destruction of documents. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council and Board of Directors adopt Resolution Number 19-043, approving the destruction of certain records for various departments.
At this time, I ask council members if they have any questions of staff.
I do.
Go ahead.
I know that the different state codes are fairly specific, and the records keeper or the city clerk may destroy records in regard to the state law, following the state law. What happens when there is a specific request for a document that has been, that is included on the list to be destroyed? Is that the response then we give to the individual, that that record has been destroyed?
Yeah.
Is there any requirement at all that we keep those records for any purpose, or that they be archived for any reason?
No, once it's reached its retention.
Anyone else?
Yes. So when was the last time that the city engaged in such a, I'm going to call it resolution, could be an ordinance, which is what it states? Or is this a first of its kind in implementation?
To destroy records?
For this item?
The last time, as in the staff report, was in March 2013, and that was due to water damage.
Then the next question for Resolution Number 19-043, quote, "certain," unquote, "records." Would you please explain what it refers to explicitly and what it implicitly means? Although I see records affecting the title of property, court records, records required kept by statute, those that are less than two years minimum. Is that the only explanation that we have when we have the word "certain" records?
All the records listed are in the attachment, Attachment B.
Okay, so for clarification of the audience and for the interpretation, I also have a definition of what the word "records" means. So the term "records" should not only include all the documents that are related to an incident or to the incidents, including any reports, any credits by the agencies, any investigations, any photographic and video types of evidence, and any types of disciplinary actions that the agency would have originated. The issue I have with this is perhaps it's vague enough to destroy documentation that could potentially be needed. And I carry issue with something like that, because the term "records" is vastly, goes beyond what's enlisted in here.
If I might, Mayor Garcia, the government code specifies what records we must retain. We are not allowed to destroy all records, things related to litigation, et cetera. And there are a whole number of categories in the government code. Those records are protected.
So does that also include protecting the exchange between government officials with their constituency or amongst themselves?
The function of looking at whatever the specific records are, the city clerk goes through the records, we go through the records, and if they qualify under the government code, we are allowed to destroy them.
So for my specific example, is that a yes or a no?
Depends which category it fits into.
If, Madam Mayor, if I might, and speaking to the vague comment, I think it's 400, page 414 through 505, which gives very illustrative view of the variety of records that we're talking about, and it obviously includes simple summaries. But, you know, if I were to take you to page 414, which is the commencement of Attachment A, you'll see a column there that deals with retention, and you'll see a different label for each one. Now, in that particular page, you have retention that says CL plus 10. And that's a coding that actually, if you cross-reference it, it's, the CL stands for closed or completed, plus 10 years is the number there. So each document has a different type of schedule, different type of retention requirement. And so with that, to answer Councilmember Gomez's specific question about exchange of communication, I can't speak to that immediately without maybe digging deeper into this attachment, as I'm sure there's likely examples of that. But notwithstanding that, there is a retention schedule adopted for that type of communication, and not until we exceed that timeframe for which it's available to be destroyed, it will continue to maintain or serve as a record of the city. And notwithstanding all of that, any destruction of records, similar to how we're doing it here tonight, has to be done in public by the council. So notwithstanding all of this, the destruction of records can't occur without the action of the council.
I don't have further questions, so I'll just provide comment when comment is due.
I do not have any speaker cards. Let me reach. I do have one. Ramiro Rodriguez.
My question about the destruction of records. So once you destroy these records, there's not going to be no digital copies of these records? You can't go back? So some of the records, it's loading, it's like 1,000 pages. But Ms. Gomez didn't say it, but I'm going to say it. One of the reasons we're barely starting to destroy these records is because the SEC prohibited the city from destroying any records, any emails, even Post-it notes, for so many years of the little debacle that cost the city $19.6 million of that settlement. So that's why they're starting to destroy those records that are now allowed to be destroyed. That's the reason. Are the records from the SEC lawsuit going to be also destroyed, or they're going to be kept and filed permanently? Records such as of the city managers, city managers, acting as city managers, Johnson, John Robertson, all the ex-mayors that were involved in that little debacle for the lawsuit for the city? I noticed their names are there, their records are going to be exhumed. So a lot of them are also tax reports of money the 700 deformed. So one of the things is, well, the SEC has the records of what they did, but it'd be easier to go to the city, if the city had them on file still, just to prove that there's no ill will, and nothing wrong was done, supposedly. So that's my question, if those records are still going to be retained for future reference, because I know there's litigation coming up from those named on that. So if we don't have that to go back, it's just going to be more expensive, because the cities can have to pay more to research and dig up those records. Thank you.
That was the only speaker card that I had. Therefore, I need a motion in a second on this item.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move that the Council and Boards of Directors adopt Resolution 19-043.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further comments?
Yes. That's all right, Madam Mayor? Yes, so it's been suggested that there could be a nefarious intent to destroy these records. Would that be an accurate... be a nefarious intent to destroy these records. Would that be an accurate characterization of what's happening here?
I can answer that no. Again, as was clearly pointed out in the staff report, if anybody reads the staff report, court records are exempt from destruction at this point.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Any further comments?
Yes. So, the people's distrust in a government has never been in vain. The city is running into a very slippery slope, and being so close to the primaries in a presidential election, this rings very inappropriate, when we're already adhering to state guidelines and state statutes and any processes that are here to protect you in terms of the communication. For example, when a person has made a records request to the California Public Records, which is all of our rights to do so, of any of our communications among each other or amongst our constituency, and I've requested thousands upon thousands of pages, when you come in and you ask for the same thing, because it's already been reproduced, they have 10 days to provide that information. But if that information is somehow destroyed, and it doesn't fit within the guidelines of what we call the state, because it's a municipal affair under our charter, which is only three pages, then what we run into is bureaucratic tape and the opportunity for when you ask for a public records request to sustain after a 10-day and say, "We cannot produce this information for you," hoping that you leave. So, all I'm saying is, I don't agree with something like this to be imported upon all of you, and I think there should be grave concern for something of this nature right now being implemented. The tides will change, the politics will change, and this council will always change with its administration. And there's a wave of a change that's coming, and there's a lot of prep work, if you've been watching over the last three years, what has sustained and consistently been shown, but many of us perhaps are still unaware, trying to perceive what it is that we're doing. And so, that's my last comment for this item.
Motion made by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with Councilmember Gomez voting no and Ramirez being absent.
Now, we move on to item D3, Green Tree Boulevard Extension Project, BNSF Railway Overpass Agreement. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation, please.
That the City Council approves the overpass agreement by and between the BNSF Railway and the City of Victorville for the Green Tree Boulevard Extension Project.
Thank you. Any questions of staff by council members?
I would just, if you would be able to, I know we've talked in closed session a couple of things, and I'm anticipating that we're running smooth with this, taking away that there's a couple of issues within closed session that we did discuss. But without bringing to light what we did discuss in closed session, how is this project looking in terms of our finances, everything perhaps lining up, and the proximity of this completion? There's a lot of individuals interested in its potential completion in terms of the day or the season and the year.
So, this compensation in this agreement is consistent with the previous authorization that City Council gave in closed session. The compensation amount is what was already authorized. And you may recall that there was an amendment to a funding agreement with the San Bernardino County Transportation Authority, in that that funding agreement basically secured all the construction funding for the project, along with other agreements for funding from Apple Valley and the county. So, we have secured all this construction funding for the project, and as it states in the staff report, the right-of-way is nearing completion. We're not complete with all the right-of-way acquisition, but we are nearing completion on it.
Do we have approximate date time that we can rely on, or not quite?
No, we don't have any hard dates on either the start of construction or the completion of the right-of-way acquisition. We could only estimate those dates at this point.
So, do we have an estimated time of when this is gonna happen?
Do you mean when construction could start?
Well, you know, sometimes I'll door knock on people's door, and they're like, "Hey, you know, when is this gonna end? When, you know, I've been in the works for 20 years. Can we anticipate next year, or in 10 more years?"
There was an inquiry from the Daily Press, I recall, and the response that we gave was, if everything moves smoothly from here on out, it is possible that construction could start as early as July of next year. However, that is only an estimate.
Right, so I was
It could start later.
I was kind of anticipating the outcome result of when that would be finished, so...
We're estimating that the construction will take approximately two years after it starts.
Thank you. No further questions.
Thank you. At this time, I do not have any speaker cards on this item. Therefore, I need a motion and a second on this item.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move that the Council take action in accordance with the recommendations set out on the agenda.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Ramirez being absent.
Now, we move on to item D4, Award of a Consultant Professional Services Provider Agreement to Green Play LLC for the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council approve the Consultant Professional Services Provider Agreement with Green Play in the amount of $139,995 to develop a comprehensive update to the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, project number BM 20-009.
Thank you. Have any questions of staff by council members?
Yes, this has been reiterated in the past. Would you be able to please remind the Council and our public the process, not necessarily the bidding, but what I'm seeking is more how we are equinimble to allowing not just people from outside of the region, but literally inside the region of San Bernardino to give out these types of projects and services, so that we can sustain more of the environment when it comes to the county of San Bernardino versus bringing people from outside of San Bernardino County, or even outside of the state.
Are you referring to the selection of the actual firm to perform the study?
Yes.
Okay, so, in relation to this project, we conducted an RFP requesting bids based on qualified firms. So, to the extent that there was a qualified firm within the city boundaries or within the high desert area, they were certainly welcome to apply. I do not know of any. However, the firm before you has done similar studies for Hesperia, Pinion Hills, Veeland, so they are familiar with the area.
Thank you. And with that question, perhaps has been also responded to, but it's really kind of like to show administration that we're really looking for something more sustainable. I'm asking, do we have, perhaps it's more for the purchasing department, do we have a clause that we have yet embedded, or that we have the spirit of the law that's implemented when there's something of this nature occurring? So, for instance, a 10% will come, the 10% of all bids will be given an extra 5% reduction in terms of if they're qualified and they're going to be in this area. I've asked this question in the past before, but it hasn't ever been that there is a clause in our purchasing department that will help Victorville businesses, if there even are Victorville businesses that can do the consulting services for Parks and Rec.
Madam Mayor, I believe what Councilmember Gomez is speaking about is a local bidder preference that's actually provided in our municipal code. John Mendiola is our purchasing manager. He is our most knowledgeable on that code, and also is responsible for managing the process. I'll ask John to perhaps address what that bidder preference is.
Thank you, Mr. Metzler. Councilmember Gomez, we do have a clause in the municipal code that allows for a 3% local bidder preference, but that's mostly for products. It's not really for services, and it's not really for professional firms that we're looking for. We use the RFP process because it's gonna be based on qualifications. Who's the best qualified firm that has the licenses, the experience, familiarity, and the methodology to bring those professional services to whoever's the best qualified? So, if they present that in their proposal, there's a committee that ranks them, and cost is really not associated. It's usually based on, you know, your experience, your firm's resume for their staffing, their professional license. So, for products, like if you were going out to bid for a vehicle, we can use the local bidder preference for that. It's a 3% local bidder preference with a $1,000 aggregate. So, what that entails is, if Sunland Ford bid on a vehicle, we would deduct 3% from that price, and if they became the lowest responsive responsible bidder, then they would be awarded that purchase. But for technical and professional services, we don't use local vendor preferences.
I appreciate the explanation. Reading into what you were saying, I'm gonna say that perhaps there's an underlying tone that we in the City of Victorville don't have the technical services and the professionals in this particular instance with this item that we can offer such a thing. And so, the bidding process would be the best. And what I'm hearing about our products, when we produce that 3% with the aggregate of $1,000, is we can't see that and transfer it
Your time is up.
...to our technical and professional services.
Correct. You can't transfer that for
Thank you.
One else?
I do not have any speaker cards on this item, so I need a motion and a second.
Madam Mayor, move that the City Council approve the Consultant Professional Services Provider Agreement with Green Play LLC in the amount of $139,995 to develop a comprehensive update to the Park and Rec Master Plan.
Second. Motion made by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember Jones. Any further comments?
I think I'd like to make a comment, and I've made it in the past. And looking at and talking to a lot of our businesses, we do have qualified individuals, not just in the product section, but also technical and professionals. And perhaps if we can start looking into the implementation of a percentage that's locally, locally meaning not just probably the City of Victorville, but it would include the county of San Bernardino, so that we can try to attract individuals, and let's show them that we are willing minimum to look at what they have in services and expertise.
Motion made by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember Jones. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Ramirez being absent.
Now, we have item D5, Water Distribution Network GIS Data Update. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the Victorville Water District Board of Directors award the purchase of professional services totaling $138,980 to Sodaro Incorporated to perform the work outlined in RFP CC 19-107, and approve the Consultant Professional Services Provider Agreement by and between the Victorville Water District and Sodaro.
Thank you. Any questions of staff by council members?
Yeah, perhaps the answer is no, but I would like to publicly state it for our records. Is this item closely related with La Honton? Any penalties for the nine days that we didn't have an action that was specific to the manholes in Victorville? And my question is, because a lot of our communities, when we talk about water, we don't necessarily create a division between the sewer system, which implements the water, and the actual drinking water. That's not yet something that our communities are well aware of, although the politicians may be, because we go to a lot of committees that were schooled in understanding that there's a different system. And so, that's why my question is coming today forth.
Yeah, this is in no way connected and has nothing to do with that.
I appreciate your response. Thank you. No further questions.
Thank you. I do not have any speaker cards on this item. Therefore, I need a motion and a second.
Move that the Council and the Victorville Water District Board of Directors approve Award, the, approve of one and two. Number one, award the purchase of professional services agreement with Sodaro, and number two, approve the Consultant Professional Services Provider Agreement between Sodaro and Victorville Water District.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember Gomez. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Ramirez being absent.
Now, we move on to item D6, City of Victorville Diversity Report. The recommendation, this information is presented as information only, and I will have Councilmember Cox present the item.
The question had come up in several discussions in regard to the Sheriff's Department, that for some reason that the Sheriff's Department diversified, and other indications indicated somewhat like the city. I'm not, I'd have to go back and listen to the tape. But in my discussions with this, I had asked that we simply put it all on the table, so if anybody has any questions. There's no action to the council, but it's a matter of receiving and filing a report, so that everyone can see what the diversity report for the City of Victorville is. And from the Sheriff's Department, that's up to the sheriff and county personnel, and that is not up to us. We don't have those records. But that was the only reason that I made the request, is to have it. As individuals say, we need to have clarity, or we need to be open about things, and one way to do it is simply provide a report. So, it's there, here's what it is. Good report, but it doesn't include the Sheriff's Department, because that's not our responsibility, nor do we have those records, nor do we have access to those personnel records, nor should we.
Councilmember Cox, yeah, my recollection is that the conversation did include trying to understand diversity-related questions involving the Sheriff's Department, and also spoke then to the Fire Department. So, as we got the direction, with the information that we have available at our disposal, we embellished a little bit, and instead of focusing on just the Fire Department, we decided to share with you, broken down by the various divisions in the organization, break it down from that perspective. And this is data that's actually data given to us as a city by the employees themselves. It's information that's pulled from their original employment applications, and so, that's the source of the information. It's all employee-driven. And from our perspective, the data is what it is, so we have no recommendation.
There was a, there's another question. We don't need to try to answer nor debate it, but my understanding is legally, a person is what they say they are. No one else has the right to say what they are. So, in the future, there may be a little problem providing a diversity report, because a person can claim to be religion, sex, whatever they want to claim, and we cannot change it. We have to show the record as they state it, not as we state it. So...
That's correct.
Right now, we need to see who we are and what we've done, and I think we've made a great effort. So, thank you, staff, for providing it. And the Fire Department, brand new, a lot of recruitment and a great job. So, thank you to also.
Questions?
Yes. So, to dispel the notion, or to demystify the notion that we, council, or we, the city, don't have access to such information, I'd like to say that we do have access. We have the power and the backing of our elected positions, and as a matter of fact, we have the California Public Records Request Act that is in all of our favors to access such information. As a matter of fact, I was, I had a meeting today with the county Sheriff's Department, because we do contract with the Sheriff's Department. We are not, we don't have our own police force, and that information was not privy, because it wasn't ready for us quite yet. And that information was not privy because it wasn't ready for us quite yet. And we were told that perhaps the captain wasn't able to supply that information because he didn't have enough time or access to it in the limited scope that he has as a captain for the city. But the county does have access to that. And as a council member, we have access to that just as well as you do. It's unfortunate that today the appointment didn't mirror, perhaps because it was aligning to today and it's a very busy, it's been a very, very busy week for a lot of us. Not to say the sheriff's been very, very busy in all of the cities. And I'd also like to tie this in since this is a lot of self-reporting. I heard that this information came from our staff that pulled the information from the records. This is why the census 2020 on April 1st, 2020 is so important because that's where we pull the information. And Mr. Cox rightly said how we report ourselves is how it's going to come out. So that's why when you look at these records, these records could ultimately change by an April 1st, 2020 census. And that's why it's so important.
I do have.
I have no, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I'm sorry. No.
I do have one speaker card, Ramiro Rodriguez.
I've really been digging into this census for this decade. I've gone everywhere, flown to Amarillo, went to DC, talked to nonprofits people, how it's affecting them. And nobody knows. One of the questions, Mr. Honorable Mr. Jim Cox was dissatisfied with my perception of what constitutes white and Hispanic. And so I guess he brought this thing together. We got a wonderful census of all the employees, Hispanics who works inside the office, who works outside, who's, who's a female, who's male. Wonderful report also from the Fire Department, but we didn't get it from the Police Department. That's what we were shooting for. We want to know exactly what we're doing. We're paying for them. We see other cities that diversify deeply. I've lived in cities where the, cities even pay police officers to go live there. They help them with their funding for their house. They're, they're coaching little leagues. There's a lot of ways you can help the community get some more, more closure and connection with the city and the police officers. That's what I was looking for. As to right now, the Hispanics, non-Hispanics, correct? You know, you feel like a woman today, you're a woman. You feel like a man, you're a man. Whatever you would decide you want to put. But when you're applying for a bank loan and you put white, you're not going to get the loan just because you put your white. They look at you, you don't qualify. So eventually we do get categorized now. Hispanics is not a race anymore. We're going to be put in, even the American Indians. And we got, everybody got together. Before it was all the Mexicans, we're Caucasians. Even the people born in Mexico are Caucasians and they're put into the mix. This census is going to unify all the Italians, Lebanese, Egyptians, Mexicans, Central and South Americans as white. Everybody's going to be counted for one race. So whether the Hispanics or the Cubans think they're going to get benefits because they were counted, we'll see. But for the first time, we're seeing that a lot of people that are being classified as white now, even though they're Hispanic, they're not getting the resources that they were. We're seeing for the first time that out of every 10,000 Hispanics graduating from high school, we see the numbers drop from further education, from being almost 1,000 getting their bachelor's, now it's down to 352. So that affects the future of the Hispanic community. So we're just trying to be recognized and counted, not as a general consensus, not as a category, but as a group of people. Thank you.
Maggie Martin.
Good evening, Your Honor, counsel. You know, sometimes I think people just like to beat a dead horse because they're never satisfied. They're just never satisfied, whether it's the issue of diversity in the Police Department or the SEC. I think that's why they just want to hear their own voice because it's dead, buried, yesterday's news. And we just get subjected to that kind of ridiculousness constantly. But it's really simple. You want to know what the diversity? Ms. Gomez, you want to know what the diversity of the Police Department is here in the high desert? Do you drive around the high desert? Because I do every day. And I'm sure you're busy and I'm sure you do. Do these other people drive around, counsel? Other people? Okay, so I'm driving down Palmdale, we'll use as an example, and I pass a unit. Hispanic, three miles down, Hispanic, four miles across town, white, two miles on the other side, black. Black, black, white, 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 Hispanic, 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 Hispanic. And I'm trying to assure these people that stop beating the dead horse. Are you blind? Do you not see the person that's driving the patrol unit? Do you not think that your city is not represented because you're the minority population? Who cares? But regardless, it's the idea that it is acknowledged that we're 50, 53 in their percent Hispanic in the HD and a little bit higher in the whole county. And they are sufficiently represented. And I'm sick and tired of being subjected to this parroting rhetoric every time I come in here. Find a new subject to beat because this one's just dead. Thank you.
Thank you. And that is all the cards that I have for this item.
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
I just wanted to speak in reference to the Sheriff's Department. County Human Resources is working on that for me. And as soon as they give me the numbers, I will give a report to the council.
Thank you so much. We appreciate that. Thank you. So this was just a presentation. There is no need for a motion on this item.
For clarification, is this to receive and file? Well, I know, but there's usually the technical terms that we use for something like that. If it's to throw away, I don't know if we can archive it and we shred it as part of our two-year limit.
It's for information only.
Okay, now we move on to item D7, Adapting Revisions to the City of Victorville City Council Policy and Procedures Manual. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council review and consider the proposed revised City Council Policy and Procedures Manual and adopt Resolution Number 19-057.
Thank you. Are there any questions of, oh, this item is, was requested by Ms. Jones. I'll let her present it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate it. Well, this item has certainly evolved over the course of the last five and a half months. I'm going to give a brief history so that, well, for the benefit of our, my colleagues and the public. So on April 16th of this year, the City Council took action to direct the city attorney in coordination with the city manager to review and make recommendations for revisions to our current policy and procedures manual. Subsequent to that direction, the city's attorney, excuse me, the city attorney's office sent two drafts to the City Council for preliminary review. Questions and comments by council members, one on July 9th and one on August 14th. A final draft for review and consideration by the council was posted on the agenda of August 20th. During that meeting, the council voted to lay aside the business until the next meeting to allow additional time for review. During our last meeting, the item was continued again in order that all council members could be present and contribute to discussion. We now find ourselves in a situation with another council member absent. So before I would make a motion to lay it on the table, I would have questions. So at this time, Madam Mayor, I hand this item back to you. And when so invited, I'm prepared to ask those questions and to offer a motion for council's consideration.
Thank you. My understanding is that Ms. Ramirez did call to say that she was okay with this item?
You accepted the provision?
I did have a conversation with Mayor Potam Ramirez and she was okay with this item going forward tonight.
So do we have any questions of staff at this time?
Yes. So since the city attorney and the city manager have been very prolific in making sure that they cross their dots and cross their Ts and dot their Is in terms of these documents that are being changed without workshops to incorporate our public's comments in terms of not just the council giving comment. When is the next qualifying modification of this document?
Madam Mayor, if I might, I believe this was originated at the request of the council. And so upon approval of this tonight, I guess technically we're awaiting any further direction you have. So if you directed us to start reviewing it again, because perhaps there are changes or edits that we didn't capture this time, if you at the next meeting directed us to proceed in reviewing it again, certainly myself and the city attorney would work with the rest of you to accomplish that goal.
Okay, so in going through the, this policy, it did state that it's two years. So I was hoping that the anticipation of that interpretation would be if the adoption does occur today, October 1st, 2019, the next eligible or qualifying modification of this document would be October 1st, 2021. So with that stated in the interpretation of what the city manager has provided for us today, I'm also assuming, and you can clarify this either city manager or city attorney, that language is embedded in that policy that states, or the majority of, of the council. I didn't capture that language there, but it certainly is coming up right now as that type of interpretation, which I appreciate it's coming on early on for our discussion. The next question for the city attorney is that does the city charter of the city of Victorville give the council as a whole? You have 30 seconds. The authority to prohibit one council member from other council members, what other council members are doing? And if so, also in preventing the council member from representing their constituency? It's a yes or no for the city attorney.
The city charter does not address that issue at all. And with respect to the two-year, there's no requirement with respect to a two-year timeframe on this. This is, you know, somewhat like a constitutional document that to the extent there's a need for amendment, they could occur at any time. To the extent this council sees something it wants to change, it could bring that up and direct the city manager and city attorney to once again look at it and try and modify it. The purpose here is to try and, and provide a document that makes these meetings run smoothly. We can't contemplate everything at one point. That's why there's been several amendments to date. And it's refining it and making it a better document each time we do that.
So what amendments are easy? And should I say, we don't have any amendments that are easily passed in the United States. If you can tell me what city and what state, I would really appreciate it because it's really tough to create amendments even for our constitution. So I don't know which one you were alluding to. It would really, it would help me understand.
Let me then change it to legislation in the state of California. Every time there's a piece of legislation in California, anywhere in the government code, any of their codes, they continually change. This is the same thing. They try and make changes to make the thing better, the document better. And that's what we're trying to do here.
Oh, may I?
Yes, go ahead.
I didn't, the first thing I thought about, first of all, I read this. I didn't find any limitation in our ordinance is about two years.
No, there is none.
In the state legislature, there's, it's common agreement among the legislatures. When they have a bill, they introduce it. If it fails, you can't bring it back up because failing is failing. It's over with. And a lot of them is continued. That's why you commonly refer to a, share about a two-year bill is because they do that so they can bring it up the next year. Otherwise, they have to wait two years. That's not our rules. That's not, we don't deal with that. So I wondered where the two years came from. I've never seen it in a city. I guess I missed it. I just wasn't aware that we ever referred to anything. However, it's a great idea to have some kind of a timeframe. But on the other hand, because I had a conversation six months ago that when you vote on an item and it's voted down, it's, it's over. It's done. You can't bring it up the next meeting. Although I've always felt that if the majority of the council wanted to bring it up, they could. But that's maybe something else to consider to be added to this, some kind of a time limit once the council makes a decision. How long is that final? That's a, that's a good point.
Well, I think that would, you know, tie your hands a little bit to the extent something changed in New York, in new law, for example, or in the Brown Act, where you might have to make a modification. Ultimately, it's going to take a majority of this council to make any changes. It's not for Keith and I to make any of the changes. So I think you'd want to keep yourself, keep some flexibility.
I have a comment, so I'll wait till the, the comments are invited. I have one speaker card, Ramiro Rodriguez.
So is this going to be tabled till Ms. Ramirez comes back or you, we're going to decide on? You guys are going to decide on this? Ms. Jones, did you say you guys were going to table this till Ms.?
Oh, Mr. Ramirez, I haven't made a motion.
Oh, well anyways, I've read this three times already. And every time, it, it just seems that the City Council and the personality of the people running the show want to prepare themselves in case in the next elections, some of their people don't get elected. They want to make sure that you don't have a Blanca or an Angela Vias up there because, oh, hell rickles. So they want to put limits on what they can say, who they can contact. You can't leave certain people out of the loop. But the thing is, sometimes the City Council has to investigate for themselves to see what's going on. They want to make sure that everybody's working to order. Just because one person says, oh, you can legally do it, doesn't mean it, you can't. And they're changing the rules. Why? Because somebody's questioning them? Ms. Vias, when she was here, when I was meeting, she, she was, Blanca's a puppy dog compared to her. But right now, what I'm seeing is they're, they're putting a lot of limits on the, the work that the council can do and the people, us, what we are going to be able to see. You guys are going to control all the information. You can't talk litigation against people suing the city. They gotta, because you know what? Some of those people are involved in the litigation from the city still. And so right now, what they're doing is quashing, making sure that person can't talk, can't say anything. You can't bring it up again. What, you run for mayor once and you don't win? You can't run again? Persistence, that's democracy. You bring it up until you convince the people that it's the right thing. And if you don't convince them, then you have to go with your losses. But this is just rewriting the constitution. I think common sense is what's in order here. Common sense is what will work. Education is what's going to work. But as we see right now, they're just really trying to quiet everything down, sequester everything. And just because we saw all those errors and all those millions of dollars that, that cost the city and are costing the city now. And we come up here and we ask them and certain council members, ask them for us too. So that's one of the things that I see this is just something to censor everything so you guys can just do everything with just a simple nay or yea. And we get left out of the, in the cold. That's how I see it.
Dan Hudgens.
Good evening. I have an opinion about this as well. And mine is, thank you very much. As a member of the community and as a citizen who comes to meetings, I appreciate the fact that your, your policy revisions are moving towards making the meetings move more smoothly. That's not taking anything away from the public. Once again, I would like to say, this is not a public meeting. It is a meeting held in public that we are allowed to come and listen to our government, hear what they have to say, and we have an opportunity to express our opinion. This is not a public meeting that we are included in the decision-making. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. That was the last card that I had.
Jones, did you want to?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I would like to make a motion. I move that the council adopt Resolution 19-057 and further that agree that this item satisfies council's August 20 direction for an agenda item to address. council's August 20 direction for an agenda item to address, quote, "What our alternatives are when people continue to interrupt the meeting," end quote.
I'll second the motion, Madam Mayor.
I have a motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Cox. Any further comments?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I'd like to say that, all due respect to Mr. Romero, he, his characterization is almost 180 degrees from the intent. The new council can change whatever rules they want, there's nothing this council can do to put this in concrete, to prohibit them from doing it. The whole idea is to be able to conduct our meetings with everyone having input, the information is available, they want transparency. This helps provide that this council can have a meeting in the public and have a discussion and allow people to have input. As things come up that cause a problem or a log ahead, we may have to change these rules every meeting. But every council can change that rule. There's nothing to say that we're trying to put things in effect that stop the next council, is, is beyond ludicrous, and I think he knows that. It's just another divisive technique to get ready for the election, and so good luck everyone. But these rules are adopted because they're in the best interest of the public to do so, and it ties no one's hands. Paul for the question.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, you?
I do, thank you, thank you. May I, Madam Mayor? Thank you so much. Well, first of all, with regard to the biennial review, if anyone is so interested, they can turn to Chapter 1, Section 2B, under Biennial Review, and it does say this manual will be reviewed at least biennially, that's once every two years, and be revised by City Council Resolution if and as needed. So we can review it at least, we have to review it at least every two years, but we can certainly do it more frequently that should the need arise. As to this policy, the proposed policy and procedures manual, I am, I am so proud of the nearly six months of work that has been invested in this document. It's, it's an exemplary piece of writing and good thought. I look at this document from a business perspective. Any organization worth its salt has a solid policy and procedures manual that it periodically reviews and updates as necessary. It's important for sound business practice, it's important to set the tone and the structure of the organization, and to set a bar for acceptable norms and protocols. That's very much needed in the business of this city, more so because we have elected officials, it's very necessary to rightly divide between the roles and responsibilities of city, our city manager, our city attorney and staff versus those of council members. This document does a very good job of dividing those two roles, and furthermore, it benefits the public because it holds council members far more accountable to what they do. It seeks to prevent the micromanagement of staff, it seeks to prevent rogue council members or any elected official from commanding the services of staff. These, in my opinion, are corrupt practices, but it's very common amongst boards and city councils. I am so glad that we are working to set that right, and that we are not going to tolerate it. This document provides greater transparency, greater accountability, so that when council members or staff goes wrong, we've already telegraphed, we're going to hold you accountable, and rightly so. We are to inspire confidence and leadership, this document does a very good job at that. Also, it seeks to keep us honest, and there was a quote earlier in this meeting that, I want to get this right, hold on, that people's, by a fellow council member, people, quote, "People's distrust in government has never been in vain." And hence, all the greater reason for this document, we are now providing explicit norms and protocols for the proper and right governance of our city. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any further comments?
Oh, I'm sorry, I said yes. So if we may call this an administration, an administration ran by Jim Cox, 30 years in the making, and we know he's held his reputation here, which merits us remembering that this is his administration. So what we've done here is we've got to remember the 1965 Civil Rights Action Groups. It didn't take one try or two people to voice, and then not repeat it till a second year. The same thing with the women's rights. It didn't take one person or two people, it took several decades before women got their right to vote. We know that this city has been here since 1962, and it's, it behooves anybody to realize that it took us six months in the 21st century of the second decade to come up with something like this. When anyone in this council who is elected to represent you sees any policy as a business prospect, that means our audience, our public, our constituency, our people, the voters, are now the new commodity. If it doesn't incite anger in you, what does? Now you are seen as commodity, because this policy is not only for council members, but it's for you. And it's a business product, so who is the product? Who is the commodity, and what are we doing with your money? Careful with language, because language can say so much, but it can say nothing when you use words and you read between those words. Even that silence said so much today for each and every single person who is living and breathing and in this room, watching through social media, and it'll run. This wording would spread, and we're going to make sure we spread it. Thank you.
I have a motion made by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with Councilmember Gomez voting no and Ramirez being absent.
And now we move on to Item D8, update regarding LGI Homes. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council provides a city manager with administrative discretion over the release of homes based on progress made by LGI Homes in satisfying the council's intent to ensure the landscape maintenance assessment district installation.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Have council members?
Yes, so if you replay the meeting of the LGI Homes presentation, you'll note that the city manager was at that moment, in that particular time, in that arena, clueless as to what the council's intent was. This became evident when Mrs. Jones opened up for comments. There was, there was a majority vote already in this item that was intently abrogated, the majority's decision, by backpedaling and giving the power to the limited executive administration rather than not. In this case, the city might as well declare itself a metocracy. So my question is, why is the council, who's elected by the people, rendering its power after it did a majority vote to reclarify an intent that at that moment's time was clearly not understood by the city manager? What are we rephrasing here, and why is that required and needed now? Do we need to clarify our intent? Why didn't we do it then?
Are you suggesting that you go out and see if the installation is completed rather than staff?
You know, Mr. Cox, I actually wrote everything that I would state. If you'd like me to reread, and you are reinterpreting, that is something different.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, if I might, I'm struggling a little bit, the terms clueless and metocracy, I think have thrown me off a little bit, got me a little bit off focus, but this item, more particularly, is attempting to be cooperative, maybe anticipating that there could be issues down the road with respect to potentially impacting or harming the ability to sell homes. And so very much recognizing what this council did with our recommendation on July 16th, this is a subject matter that actually dates back to June 12th, when the Planning Commission considered a request to modify an existing planned unit development, and the Planning Commission actually approved the PUD, accepting a certain condition, and that certain condition was that the developer would not be allowed to final any homes until such a time as a small landscaping area along what I believe is the northern boundary of the site, Rancho Road is basically the road that it's paralleling. And so with that, that was the Planning Commission's recommendation to the council. The council heard in this public audience, I believe it was in fact a public hearing, this item, and it actually intended, it actually modified slightly what was recommended by the Planning Commission, and that slight modification was intended twofold, intended to not harm the potential selling activity of the developer, which allowed for, as a part of its approval, the condition that homes be, I'm sorry, that the model home be allowed to be finalized, with the exception of the remaining homes, which was about 18 more homes, could not be finalized until such a time as the wall was, and the landscaping was installed. The greater concern that the council had, as well as the commission, and it relates to the existing code that we have, but the greater concern that the council and the commission had is by not requiring those improvements to be installed on a front-loaded basis, that there was a potential risk to where the city could see those homes being built, the developer decides not to move on to the subsequent phases, and before you know it, you've got 19 or so units constructed without fulfilling the original intent to get the landscaping in. So I think that was the overarching concern of both the commission and the council. The direction by the council at the last meeting was to allow for the, the model unit to proceed, and in doing so, the developer has been able to, I believe, successfully use that model home to actually market homes. My understanding is that they had a little, I shouldn't say groundbreaking, but there was a ceremony on a weekend where they basically had an open house, if you will, promoting the, the opening of that new development. We're at a stage right now, council, to where, with that condition, I think it satisfied the intent of the council, to where since that time, we've seen the developer come in and pull permit, we've reviewed plans, we've gone, made corrections of plans. At the, at the end of the day, permits have been issued for the landscaping, I've visibly seen myself by having gone out to the site, actual materials being bought, including the blocks that will make the block wall, there's actual construction of space where the footings will be installed, there's meaningful progress occurring. And so having seen that, I think that matters, and I think that serves as a good representation of the intent by the developer to fulfill the ultimate concern of this council. I do see a potential to where, notwithstanding them moving at the pace that they're moving and, and building out the LMAD, I do see some of the homes being constructed nearing a phase to where they likely could be an escrow, and to a point to where, based upon the condition of the council, those escrows could be held up, potentially jeopardizing sales. I think it's an effort to continue to be as, cooperative's not the right word, but as helpful as possible to encourage the success of this developer and still be able to have confidence that your ultimate goal is achieved, is why I brought this item before you. I do have a schedule from the developer as to when, over the course of October, they may be seeking to close some of those escrows, and those are going to be, there's about 13 that are anticipated to be finalized, or in a stage to be final, to where they can actually close escrow, and that's actually before the estimated completion date of November 27th, which is the current estimated completion date for the LMAD installation. That notwithstanding is why I brought this item before you, is so that we can help our local builder be as successful as possible, especially as they continue to satisfy our intent to build that wall and not leave it for some other developer down the road, is why I brought this item forward, to allow some discretion to myself as a city manager to monitor the progress. Obviously, if there's no progress and they stop doing what they intend, what they've, what they've been doing tomorrow, then I think that's certainly going to impact my decision as to allowing for the release of homes. But I think this is a, this is a matter where discretion may prove valuable to both the developer and the city in ultimately achieving our goals.
Madam Mayor, I, I thought the council had done exactly that, that was why I was unsure why this was back on the agenda. We recognized that it needed to be discretion, this is very unusual, the homeowner, the people who live there now want to see this completed, they don't want to see construction, council discussed that, and I believe that the council gave you the exact direction that you're asking for here, now?
Not exactly.
All right, well, if it's a clarification, then that's fine.
And that's really why I'm bringing that back, the fact that it was adopted in connection with an ordinance, and that ordinance was adopted with an understanding, I think for the sake of being as cautious as possible and not wanting to go out and do, do something that I think is different than what the council said in adopting that ordinance, is why I've brought it back for you tonight.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I do not have any speaker cards, therefore I need a motion in a second.
Well, I, this helps clarify the issue, I move staff's recommendation.
Second. Motion made by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember Jones. Any further comments?
Yes, accosting and abrogating, or a type of intimidation contact with this particular entity, this matter was highly contested and highly debated when the city council specifically mentioned this item in terms of what is taking place today. It's unfortunate that Mr. Cox's call, as, because he defined this as injury to homebuyers, that's how it was being crafted, the council made a decision, and in our discussions, there was even calls made to accommodate City Councilmember Deborah Jones' concerns specifically. The reason I brought issue with this item is the following, administrative discretion over. What connotes administrative discretion? Just look at the power play on that. Satisfying the council's intent. It was already stated that the intent was suffice, Mr. Cox just verified it, this order must be in play. That was my concern, if you look at the history of the council, no city manager has ever requested this type of administrative discretionary powers. As a matter of fact, it's my understanding that not too long ago, we already provided him, through the municipal code changes, several groundbreaking administrative discretionary powers. So yes, I hold issue, and now that it is stated, you know why, I vote the way I vote.
Madam Mayor, may I thank you very much. First of all, I wish to thank our city manager for bringing this back to the council in the interest of full transparency, to make sure that you are moving in complete harmony with the direction of city council. It was my understanding back in that, that meeting, was a lengthy public hearing, and there was a lot of discussion about making sure that the city isn't in, in any risk whatsoever of an LMAD not being completed, and what that would mean to the surrounding community. So I believe that there was some discussion, I haven't listened to the tapes again, but that there was some discussion that a certain number of homes could be finalized, released before the LMAD, would, the LMAD would have to be completed before the other homes would be released for final. And so it was kind of, I think in that meeting, what, there was a seeking to strike a balance between furthering good business and incentivizing furthering good business and incentivizing good business in our great city, and yet making sure that we're protecting the interests of our communities. So, I do appreciate your bringing this back, so that you can get absolute clarification from your council. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, and I agree on that, too.
There have a motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember Jones, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with Councilmember Gomez voting no, and Mayor Protemmer Ramirez absent.
Now we move on to public comments. And I do have some cards. The first one is Ramiro Rodriguez.
One of the things I want to clarify, when the meetings, when this meeting started, when I got here, they spoke about Desert Haven, and everything was fine, home for the, place for the homeless, gentleman's come up here and talked, everything was going well, they can provide shelter for all these people, thirty units, and then somebody, some guy in a black suit and black pants, and a little short, little fat Mexican guy starts, gets up here, and tells them, no, they're going to rent them. And what? I thought it was going to be for the homeless. But you know what? Nobody said that, till somebody brought it up. Nobody from the diocese said that, anything about that, till somebody from the public brought it up. Everything is all closed and everything, and you still want to revise how you guys operate to shut us out? I don't think so. It's so much of a fact that one-twelfth of thirty percent of the actual fair market rent is going to be assessed on these rental units, which were supposed to be ninety, they were sixty, then they said they're going to build ninety, so they went ahead with it, now there's only going to be thirty-one. How come you guys didn't bring that up when you're discussing about these units? See, that's the thing, is that only, we have to pry the information out, we have to, we don't request it, we have to really pry it, we keep insisting. It's been two, three years I've been insisting of the itemized copy of the settlement, I haven't gotten nothing. Joe Public hasn't gotten nothing, or Jose Publico, however you want to call me. But the thing is, it worries me, we saw that in action, right now, today, we can witness that and say, you know what? Information was retained from us. They didn't tell us they're going to rent it to people, to people working in Victorville. Supposedly it was just for the homeless. Why didn't you do that? Something didn't matter? I think it's very important, when you tell the people it's going to be for one thing and use it for another. And you even imply right here, in writing, the percentage that you're going to use to charge rent, fair market value, one, well, one-twelfth percent of, one-twelfth of thirty percent of fair market value. So, that's why we kind of question when you guys want to leave the city manager and lower in charge of everything. And yes, we do, we, this is a public meeting, and we are not, you know, we're here because we have to be here, and we can be here, and we should be here.
You have thirty seconds?
Thank you very much.
Esther Maggie, it'll be Gabriel Calvin.
Good evening again, Your Honor, and council. This will be fairly brief and painless. Okay, so, I just, I'm going to read from how I wrote it. "To the Honorable Mayor Gloria Garcia and council members, I would like to offer up the following request for a future agenda item. Based on the dire need for more deputies here in the city of Victorville, I would like to see some type of citywide measure placed on the 2020 election ballot, or sooner by special election, as deemed appropriate by the council. It does seem to be the general consensus of the public, and perhaps the council, that the VVPD and the City of Victorville Fire would substantially benefit from having their financial resources augmented with a measure that states specific intent for these funds." Excuse me. Basically, I'm asking for revival of something identical to the former Measure K, a half-cent sales tax increase, and anyone doing business in the city, passing through, whoever, half a penny on a dollar. Sales tax increase that was previously presented to, not this council, former council. I'm hoping that a diligent, thorough, and mutually respectful discussion between council members will result in an affirmative granting of my request. I can only see how such measure would benefit our public safety, excuse me, safety members, thank you. Oh, can I put this in the record, public record?
Yes.
Thank you.
Gabriel Calvin.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor Garcia, and City Manager Metzler. I'm Gabriel Kelvin, I am the Associated Student Body President and Student Trustee for Vario and Victor Valley College. And I'd love to introduce myself to you, and I hope that I can open the lines of communication between yourselves and myself, being a student representative, and I would firmly love to see if there's any way that the city council can connect with the students of Victor Valley College. I firmly believe that the individuals we are equipping at Victor Valley College are the building blocks we will build the future of the High Desert with. And that being said, I believe the community would benefit from the city council not only having a strong relationship with the college administration, but its student leaders as well. So I hope this will not be the last time I stand before you, I hope next time I'll have some students with me, and maybe some college officials, but until then, I'd like to leave you with a thought. A philosopher once said that education is not the filling of a vessel, it is not filling an individual with knowledge, it is the ignition of a fire, it is the ignition of a passion to learn, to grow, to engage and connect with their community and make a difference. And that being said, that fire is strong and alive in the hearts of Victor Valley College students, and I believe this council has tremendous ability to fan those flames and grow that passion. Any ability you can connect with us and speak into our futures would have a tremendous impact in our students' lives. And as I stand with the future generation of the High Desert, I would like to say, thank you for your work in our community, and I hope that we'll be in contact. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Katrina Gilbert?
I'm not sure if it's Katrina or Catricia? Katrina, okay.
Thank you very much for having me speak, or allowing me to speak. I'd like to just go over a few issues that were brought up in the earlier agenda items, but weren't related to the agenda items. So, in D2, there was discussed the grave danger of destroying documents.
Could you speak into the microphone a little, I'm sorry?
My apologies. So the grave danger of destroying these documents, if I read it correctly and I understood correctly, these documents are documents that are no longer needed or pertain to the council or their movements in the future. So there's no real danger in destroying these documents at all, and for that to be presented is just unlogical. So in D4, it's, if, what it has done for the city, this is regards with having someone outside of the High Desert and outside of Victorville itself, work for us to upgrade our parks and stuff like that. So, first of all, I believe it was explicitly stated that no one in Victorville or the High Desert area actually applied to work for this, so having to reach outside, I don't see as a bad thing, because it's still benefiting the city and the people of the city, and if it's what's best for the city, then we need to move forward with it. Regarding D6, I do not believe that demographics matter when it comes to the workforce, and I know a lot of times it's explicitly stated to the police force that the demographics of the police force aren't represented of the community. As I said at the last meeting, for those of you that were there, it does not matter what race they are, they have to go through these tests, they have to go through these obstacle courses, these physical trainings, and that goes for any job. They have to go through all these qualifications to get that job, and it's not based off of race. They do not have a quota saying, we need thirty percent Hispanic, we need forty percent Black, whatever that is. It's purely based off of the individual's requirements and the qualifications for that. And I'd like to point out that, as of the 2018, I believe, census, they were talking earlier, another commenter was saying that the Hispanics weren't represented or were being classified as white. I'd like to say that thirty-point-six percent of California is Hispanic and deemed as Hispanic, so for them to be saying that they're not represented or not shown in the censuses are not true. And D7 says that the public can weigh on any item at any meeting, that's why you hold these meetings, is that we can weigh in and give our opinion.
Thirty seconds?
And this amendment was proposing the changes to their policy, and the only reason to give a change for policy is if it has become an issue. So if it was never an issue, it would never have been proposed. So this is merely to correct an issue, and that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Those were all the cards that I had for the public comments. Therefore, now we move on to E2, reports from city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the council. This Saturday, Celebrate Community at the City of Victorville Fall Festival, a street fair experience with free live entertainment, musical performance, pony rides, and free Kid Zone. This year's event will include the unveiling and dedication of the Legacy Courtyard near the main stage at 11:30. For more information, you can contact our community services, that's our 18th Annual Fall Festival, which is this Saturday, October 5th, here in the Civic Center area. On Friday, February 18th, I'm sorry, Friday, October 18th, it's late, Friday, October 18th, Residential Water Conservation Workshop, this one's going to be done in, or conducted in Spanish, that'll be here at City Hall in Conference Room D, 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. We also have Community Cleanup Day coming up, Saturday, October 19th. Volunteers are willing to participate, we offer free t-shirts, gloves, litter sticks, bags, water, and coupons for discounted lunch at local restaurants, also contact City Hall. That's Saturday, October 19th, 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM, various sites throughout the city of Victorville, very successful event, and definitely more and more successful with the volunteers that we can get to participate. Shred Fest and Compost Giveaway, Saturday, November 2nd, 8:00 AM to noon, Victor Valley Murph, that's over on Abbey Lane, it's free to all Victor Valley residents. Development Updates, let's see, Mojave River Walk, we finally have a ribbon cutting schedule for November, in November. Sully Miller has announced that they're donating to pay for the costs of the event, so stay tuned for the exact date and the exact time of that unveiling. We've got some progress, as you probably see, some major walls being constructed along Bear Valley Road, that is an extension of the Bear Valley Bike Path. We're excited about the fact that we've gotten finally plans approved by Caltrans to have the signal installed at La Mesa 395, and then finally a skate park update, we're in final documents, our final documents are actually expected to be in purchase, actually, they're in purchasing now, we expect to be on the street with actual advertising within the next two weeks. Go ahead.
Thank you. Now we move on to E3, which is Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Items for the Upcoming City Council Agenda, and this is a three-minute time limit.
Yes, the appointment to someone in the Communities Committee. That's something that I'd like to add to the agenda, since last time it was prohibited from being a part of the agenda to be added to this meeting today.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, this item is explicitly one of those, if you like me to express, that is a motion, let me know.
That's the way the policy manual works, is seek a motion on that, so.
So yeah, so this agenda item is for everyone that wants to add something, and without that motion, which is already explicitly stated, I don't think I have to say that this is a motion, but if I need to say it today for clarification of any council member, this is a motion to add for the appointment to the Communities Committee, which has its specific name.
Motion made by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Councilmember Jones, all those in favor?
Yep, I have a comment. I just have this quick comment, yeah. If I may, and this is, this is for the attorney. On something like this, it seems that it logically follows, if you have a vacancy, you should be able to request through a channel other than being, coming before the council to put it on the agenda, it seems like that's the normal course of business.
Yes, typically, actually, when there are vacancies, I think it's annually, we open that up for appointments, so certainly I don't see a problem with this coming back as, you know, unfortunately, that time has elapsed, there is a vacancy, so it'd be appropriate for Miss Gomez to add that to the next agenda.
Right, but just, so going forward, let's say I had a vacancy, could I go to the city manager and say, look, I have a vacancy, I need an agenda item to bring forward my candidate?
The council member, I mean, the city manager can put agenda items on like that as well, yes, that'd be another way of accomplishing the same thing.
Okay, and only because it falls within what seems to be the normal course of
Right.
Business, okay, thank you.
I have a motion by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Councilmember Jones, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Ramirez being absent.
That was all I had.
Okay. Thank you, I have nothing, Madam Mayor.
I don't either. We move on to E4, Reports from Council Members, three-minute time limit, Ms. Gomez.
So, thank you for making your way here, newly-elected ASB President for VVC. Once in a while, I make my round there, too, you'll see me more often. I'm glad that you're extending the need to have partnerships specifically with council members, because that does create a greater strength. I'm also very appreciative of the amount of intellectual hours and conversations that have been put into this city by specific audience members, specifically Ramiro, thank you for doing that, I think you do most of the work than perhaps many of my council member colleagues here put together, which is something that I'm not very proud of, but I need to say that I'm proud of you putting that, even though that you're not in this level, one day I'm sure you'll make it, and I appreciate that of you, and that's my comment to you. Also, of course, because there's over eight hundred plus, and for you to have read something of that magnitude and not have staff backing and to be able to kind of sit down with the experts, it's really, it could be really daunting. Also, I'd like to say that, you know, there's, there's also other members that have come up here, and use their, in their limited wisdom, or an understanding, limited understanding of the nature of what's happening on here, you would get to realize that here as the electeds, we're a population, that perhaps you don't fall and you're not poor, ma'am, perhaps you're not neglected either, perhaps you've never been abused, so it's really easy to come up here and say that there is representation through different mediums. However, if you would begin to understand, we do have a housing authority in the County of San Bernardino, because state law has recognized that there's issues of housing for limited people who are on income that perhaps are zero to SSI, zero to nothing, homeless people don't have that representation. If you were homeless, you would be here advocating for them. The same thing with our city resources, our city resources are limited and we can only do so much. We expect so much from people who are in educational systems, we expect a lot from our experts, even our schoolgoers and our practitioners, as a matter of fact, that's only to name a few. I need you to know that none of us up here, ma'am, have an education that was required to take an advocacy seat to represent you or anybody in here, but as a matter of fact, I've taken it upon my own hands
Thirty seconds?
To be working on a doctoral degree, to make the change for public administration, but it's not required, there's a need to bridge the gap, and we need it now.
Very briefly, so I attended two VBWR meetings in Councilmember Cox's stead, which included first and second round interviews for the JPA's General Manager position. On 9/20, I was very honored to be invited and attend the Victorville Senior Citizens Center in its free community cooking and gardening class, and let me just tell you, they cooked beautiful food from vegetables from their very own garden that they just got up and running recently. And I understand that Jim Hill from Squash and Friends also donated vegetables, but there were about fifty participants that day, and that was such a good thing to see our seniors so involved in our community and fellowshipping with one another.
our seniors so involved in our community and fellowshipping with one another and learning how to cook in a healthier way. On September twenty-fifth, I attended the San Bernardino County State of Education Address. That's always near and dear to my heart, since I was trustee for eight years prior to being elected to this seat. And it was, it was very encouraging to see the many minds involved in making sure that we have greater minds in the future, because they are our future. Madam Mayor, that's all I have at this time. Thank you very much.
Well, I really don't appreciate Councilmember Gomez stating that we fail to actually comply with our obligation as council members. I don't want to lower myself to her level, but I take offense, because every time she makes a statement, it's always to insult, as you will see, and I don't even have to mention it. The public is aware of it, and it's very degrading and insulting to her, not to us. Thank you. No other business before the council. This meeting is adjourned.